Is the chief coming? John? What's your name, sir?
Jeff Golden.
Oh, yeah. Hi, Jeff.
How are you?
I'm Medfield. Sorry. Hi, Chief. I mean, order ready, Kim.
You can start any time.
I call a meeting to order. Please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Present, we have Tim Patricus and Tim Keeney Selectman, Steve Jacobs, our Sanitarian, Todd Rowland, our Department of Public Works Director, Allison Maynard, our Social Services Director, Mike Marinaccio, Chief Financial Officer, Kim LaFleur, Operations Director, and John Roach, our Bar Chief. Guests include Catherine, Bill Meyer, Jeff Golden. Did I mention you, Glenn? I apologize. Glenn Reynolds, our Emergency Management Director, and Bob Chester. Welcome, everyone. First item on the agenda is the COVID update, communication, and operation. We're currently operating on, under Phase 2.1 of the Governor's executive orders. But given the recent uptick in positive cases here at Summers, which I think is now 12 or higher, Steve.
Well, hot off the presses, we are officially a red state now.
Yes.
Red, red state, red town. I just printed this report out before tonight's meeting. Last week's caseload is up to 23 cases. We had it at 21. So that puts us over the case rate for two-week average, up to 20.4.
Just as a clarification, those are all strictly Summers residents exclusive of what's happening at the prisons?
This is residential cases. The difference between the 21 and the 23, we may include a prisoner or two. I just looked at the latest reports and there was another case as of this afternoon.
At the schools?
And there has also been another death at the prison from COVID.
Right.
That's the first death we've had since April. All, every one of women has been at the prison.
Does that include the latest communication from the schools? There are two additional cases, I thought.
No, those wouldn't be in this report. That is probably going to show up in next week. We have four probable and confirmed cases already this week that probably aren't included in this report. This is really a week prior to when they produced these. So that being said, we are in the, in the red zone, or red case for response framework. I just brought the chart, so thank you. I know you've probably all seen it, but just to have one, sorry. They really recommend really tightening down on events in town and the way we do operations for businesses, government, everybody. So in an earlier staff Zoom meeting this week, we talked about, you know, operational activities for town departments and stuff and how we should move forward. Some of the recommendations are maybe going back to appointment-only contact with residents so we don't have the constant stream of people coming in and out of Town Hall. We may already have some situations presently that we're monitoring, so... It's not pretty in the whole state. As you saw the map, it's almost entirely red. Bud may have more information on what.
Yeah, we had an extensive meeting with Todd Personnel and based upon the approval from Board of Selectmen, tonight we'll probably come up with some additional parameters and recommendations. My personal feeling is, obviously, if anybody's experiencing any COVID symptoms, which would be shortness of breath, fever, diarrhea, aches and pains, trouble breathing, stay home. Do not come into work. Secondly, I think we're going to probably put a mandate out based upon the approval from the Board. All meetings should be scheduled via appointment. We're going to probably have the doors locked. That's another recommendation we can ask for the Board of Selectmen's approval. And basically, whatever business we can use in terms of offline, remote contact and/or drop boxes or mail, I think we should stress that. Obviously, any mask-wearing is required in the halls or in offices, et cetera. And I guess the key thing here is the safety. Now, I'm not sure what the Governor's going to come out with next, but there's some rumors and speculation that he may go back to Phase 1. The other states surrounding us, New Jersey, New York, and Massachusetts, or Rhode Island, I might add, are already pushing for more aggressive procedures. So at this stage of the game, I think it's just a matter of time. But I'll get your opinion as well as Todd's and John's and Glenn's. Glenn, you want to make some comments here?
No, I just, I agree with Steve. We need to scale back some of the stuff, like you said. I think the stuff we brought up tonight, Director, is really the deal is progress. I think if we get the public tonight, we're definitely off the things.
Yeah, we obviously are going to close the senior center because that population is most vulnerable, given their medical situation. And of course, we don't have any sports activities, Todd, so we're okay there. Of course, the Governor is suggesting that we limit gatherings still more, not more than 10. Obviously, we're following social distancing here. But I think the key watchwork here is to basically follow the requirements by the CDC. It's obviously published on the Todd website. And just be safe, I think. Hopefully, we can get out of this thing. My concern, of course, is with the Thanksgiving holiday coming up and people returning from schools, this could be a spreader, so we're just going to have to be cautious. Todd, any comments?
I know, same as Glenn and Steve. I do think we should go back to appointment-only in all buildings and kind of handle it like that. There is no sports going on in there. It is very quiet. As far as the recycling center, it can be operated as normal, as normal as this has been. The bulk operators wearing masks and really keeping to themselves. Instruct them again to not interact with the public anymore than is absolutely necessary. The good news is we're coming into winter, so things tend to slow down as far as construction or other things. It's mostly just household trash, which folks can do on their own, so they don't need a lot of assistance.
Is there anything we need in Town Hall or other building sites in terms of protective measures?
We'll install the buzzer upstairs for Town Hall and do some signage for all the buildings. And just by appointment, please call this number and the other number, which department we assign for each building. Other than that, we have all of the guardian in place that we did this spring, as well as the schedules on as far as social distancing and what have you.
Once we make a determination of which way you want to proceed tonight, we'll have to communicate this to the public, which we can do on our website or social media, bulletin boards, or whatever the case may be. Chief, we had that one death, I think it was a younger person, 45 years old, I think, in the prisons.
Correct.
Did he have previous medical conditions or problems?
I, no, I don't know. I didn't, wasn't previously called personally, so... Kind of protected my debit as well, so... I don't know if they do have cases of debt that we're dealing with right now.
So Steve, in your opinion, do you think we're on the cutting edge here in terms of additional increases in positive cases?
Well, you're going to get the domino effect from this current surge as more people start testing because they've been in contact with someone. So you're going to naturally get probably more positives because there's going to be more testing. So I expect to see, you know, a surge in cases just from that alone for at least a week or two. And then we'll see what happens with Thanksgiving as people are traveling and gathering.
In discussions with the superintendent yesterday, they now have, I think, additional two students. One student, for example, could impact as many as seven teachers, which means in effect, they're going to have to be quarantined. So it's a problem.
Yeah. And one of the other cases is a student who goes to another high school and lives in town.
Right.
For purposes of informing the public, this is an opportunity just to explain, maybe Todd can do it, as to how, how it works, meetings by appointment only with locked doors at the front of Town Hall. What's the procedure?
The person that says you want to go to the tax office.
Right.
We'll put that out as communication on the website, Facebook, and keep putting it out, as well as fire departments are good about sharing it. You make a call to the, whatever, make a call to the tax office and say, "I want to come in and pay my taxes." Okay, you come in at 10 o'clock. They'll ring the buzzer up front, and one of the people from the tax office or finance or the clerk's office are typically the ones that will answer the door and ask them who they are and check and make sure that they're, they haven't quarantined.
Good. If they don't have masks, we'll provide masks for them. I went back to the original parameters we had, I think it was in April, when we were in Phase 1. And there was some, not resistance, there was some confusion. But once people understood what the requirements were, it followed fairly smoothly, if I recall. A bit inconvenient, but we're all being inconvenient these days. So I think plan ahead, people, construction people or people for taxes. Mike, I guess we're going to go through the tax season here too, right at the end of the year.
So what, what kind of numbers does the town have to have to get out of the red zone?
Well, the criteria is 15 cases per 100,000. And right now, we're at 20.4 with this latest surge.
20.4 cases per 100,000? Per 100,000?
Is the average. I mean, obviously, we don't.
Per 100,000 tests or what?
100,000 population.
So we have a population.
On a two-week, you know, rolling average.
We got a population of like 9,000, right?
Or, probably more closer to eight when you take out the prison population. So... So how does that quarterly? What are the numbers?
Do we have to get to fewer than two cases then?
No, it's, it's, there's a formula that they come up with for that. And, you know, our cases are based on our population, obviously factored in. The 100,000 would, you know, is, is what the number would be, you know. I'm not explaining it very well.
Well, it's going to be tough for the public to understand it too. That's my concern.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of a weird formula and I don't actually try to figure it out. I go by what's on the state map and the cases.
But it would be nice to know what numbers we need to get below to achieve a better level.
Well, you'll, you'll get below when, when the caseload for the town meets that less than 15 per 100,000.
But still, I mean, that doesn't make sense. 15 per 100,000, we only have 8,000 people in town. So how many people are COVID-positive in town now that aren't prison-related?
Well, based on this, the last week, we had 23 cases in town. And so that really, that pushed.
That weren't, we're not prison.
Two weeks ago, we were in the gray, you know. And in the last two weeks, we've had this, you know.
Spike.
Spiking cases, which pushed us, you know, above that, that 15 per 100,000.
But to Tim's point, 20 cases, let's call it 10,000 people in town, 20 cases per 10,000 is surely greater than 15 per 100,000. What's the number where we can safely get the town back to the orange or yellow?
Well, you're probably looking at, at two or three cases for a town this size to get back down there. And that's where we were, you know. We've had more cases in this month than, almost as many than we've had, you know, we're up to like 85 cases total. And, you know.
Two to three active cases is what you're saying?
Yeah.
They'll, the GPW puts these numbers out weekly, so they'll let us know if we get into the orange or when we get back into the orange. And that's really what we have to do by.
Yeah, we're taking the guidelines from the state, whatever the formula they're using. I understand you're looking at the percentage numbers of 15 or 20 cases over 8,000 people versus 15 over 100,000. You know, I understand that. There's, but we didn't hit the tipping point until I think we were over, was it 10 or 12 or 13? I forget.
Well, like I said, we only, we had three cases two weeks ago. We had eight cases the week, you know, last week. And now we've had 23 cases based on this.
So on eight cases.
So they're like doubling every, every week is what's happening right now or more. And if we keep on that trend, it's, you know, it's not going to be great.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to overthink it, but I'm looking at the state information that was updated today. And it shows Summers. Summers is a shade of orange that's a little bit darker than Stafford, but lighter than Enfield, okay? So I just want to make sure that if we're sending a message out, it's consistent with what residents might see online so that they don't get conflicting information. That's, that's the issue we had with your, the report you got back about our communication last time, Tim, that it was inconsistent and inconclusive.
I'm not sure which map you're looking at.
This report is the latest that he.
This just came out today.
Yeah.
Eighty hours ago.
This is from Connecticut Government Portal, and it says.
What's the time?
Updated 11/19/2020.
But what's the time of the day? Because I just heard, saw this.
I don't know, but I'm just saying that, that a resident might be as confused as I.
Right.
So I want to make sure that if we have a question on how are the numbers gathered, somebody calls and finds out how the numbers are being put together so that we have some sort of consistency. So, anyway.
People, part of the problem is the state is not providing this consistent information.
Yeah. And no, I'd like to stand by.
Yeah. Tim, Tim, the report that you're looking at, this report that Steve just came out with in the last 30 minutes.
I think we can all agree there's an issue and we have to decide what to do with Town Hall. But then there's a communication issue that's besides that, so we should get clarity.
That may be a total caseload map that you're looking at. This is this two-week revolving caseload map that, that the state is using right now for... Basically, it determines, you know, how the virus may be spreading in a community. And if you're in the red, that means you've got active, you know, community spread. And it's, you know, that's the most serious situation where you're going to get it passed from person to person on red.
Now, we get a.
They say you should absolutely avoid, you know, gatherings and.
Why don't we get a clarification from the state as this specifically relates to Summers in terms of the questions that both Tim and Tim are asking? I think that'd be helpful.
Like I said, I think that's a total caseload map.
Okay.
I didn't read all the detail, but that's what it appeared to be.
The point is, regardless of the numbers, it's spiking, and I think we have to take the necessary precautionary measures. And my concern is that if it's jumped this much from eight to 21 to 24, I have no idea what it's going to be next week with all these students returning, so caution is the word. Safety is the word. Talk a little bit about testing, Steve. I know we're testing more as a state. And we have test sites, I guess, in Vernon. Allison was looking at that. It was suggested at yesterday's Director's Meeting. We take a look at options in terms of quick onsite testing. Is that correct?
Correct.
You want to fill us in on that, Allison?
Sure. So at our Director's meeting yesterday, I did suggest that we try to come up with our own pop-up drive-through COVID testing here in town. We're constantly retiring out for Summers for this testing. And the testing centers are inundated. People are waiting and can't get in for days in some cases to get tested. We know Johnson has very high amounts of people coming through. So I met yesterday with Dr. Rampow from Ellington Priority Urgent Care. He is the one who is doing the testing in Vernon, Ellington. He's done these Gramby, Bramby, these Windsor. And essentially, it's a satellite of his clinic. He was set up in a parking lot, ideally in our town, that would be the senior center. No call ahead required, no cost to the town. He bills the residence insurance for, for the service. We'd be responsible for the logistics, so probably somebody from GPW, fellow police officer onsite. And, but all those costs would be reimbursable under a theme of reimbursement for emergency response activities. And he's willing to do this once a week for us consistently for a couple hours each week. So we could do it on Wednesday or Thursday, or, I'm sorry, or Friday. And it's pretty quick to set up. It's about a three- to four-day turnaround if we decide we want to do this and offer it to our residents. And I just think it's a valuable service to say that we're offering.
What kind of hours would they be available?
So they typically run them for about two hours. And he'll work with us of when we want to do it. The Vernon one, I believe, is nine to 11, twice a week at their senior center, obviously a much larger population than us. But we can work with him to decide how long and what day we want to do it on.
I think we're going to have to put some parameters on this too. People just want to get tested because they want to be tested. I think there should be some sort of requirements. If you're experiencing some symptoms, they should get priority. Did you talk to the doctor about that?
So it really is a no-call-ahead, no-question-ask. You know, when you arrive, the nurse will ask all those questions, you know, "Do you have any symptoms?" In some cases, and maybe some of the other experts in the room can speak to this, but my understanding is in some cases, if you say you had those symptoms, your insurance might kick it back to you. And then that becomes between the resident and their insurance company about whether or not the test is covered. But if you have symptoms, the test will be covered.
What if they don't have insurance?
If they don't have insurance, he said that it goes up to the state.
Okay.
And the state covers the cost. Yep. And once again, that's between Ellington Priority Urgent Care and the state, not, it doesn't involve us.
No symptoms and possible exposure? Is that enough to get someone tested?
Really, yeah. I mean, you could, you could go because, yeah, you're going to see relatives next week and you want to get tested.
I see.
Yep.
I think this is a great suggestion. It came out of the Director's meeting. I don't know if you brought that up, Tim or Allison, but... It's got an opportunity because the wait lines at Johnson Memorial, two, three hours sometimes. And then, of course, there's a limitation in terms of testing sites, but this is a great program, I think. It's basically a circuit rider, if you want to call it that, that comes to our town. And we can make notification of this and people can have a fast way to get tested. And now, what are the results in terms of timing of that?
So once again, other experts in the room would know better, but these are not going to be the rapid tests. I know that. So I know the labs are overwhelmed right now as we're hearing the news. So the doctor said it's about a two- to four-day turnaround now. He, he clearly runs a well-oiled machine. He's been doing many of these pop-up clinics since April in other communities, which is why he can so quickly and easily get us up and running because he's been doing it for months for other towns.
And is there anything that the Board needs to authorize to get this moving? Like, does Bud have to sign something to authorize him to work at, on town property, anything of that sort?
We will need a certificate of liability insurance from the town. And there may be some paperwork that needs to go back and forth, Bud, but it's minimal.
So I'd like to go ahead and just make a motion that we authorize the first selectman to execute any necessary paperwork so that we can establish a pop-up test clinic at the senior center, two days per week, two hours a day.
Is it two, two days a week? Because I found it was one, one day.
Yeah, probably one day or so.
Oh, one day, okay. Oh, motion amended. Yep, one day a week, two hours a day.
I'll second that.
Any additional discussion?
Thank you.
That is a great idea. Thank you for investigating that, Allison. Mayor, I should ask Steve this.
Do you want to take a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in favor.
All right.
Aye. Motion passes. Steve, I want to ask you a question regarding this in-home testing. Do you have any information on that?
I don't have a lot on it, but I've heard that getting in-home tests is not the most reliable way to do it. And even the rapid test, they say, if you have a positive on that, you should go get the PCR test, which is the two- to four-day turnaround to confirm it, because those are not, you know, real reliable either. False positives and false negatives. I haven't really read anything personally on the in-home testing, so I can't really say other than I know in-home tests are, I don't know. Most things are not the best way to go.
Let's do it yourself, sir.
You're not under marketing yet. You're just talking about getting your ratings.
And then the in-home test is supposed to also require individuals to pay for it themselves.
That's what I was going to.
Not covered by.
Yeah, it's like a little radon kit. You get mailed to your house.
That, that'll make a difference right there.
Again, you know.
We have a lot of people.
Yeah.
So Bud, do you need a specific motion on Town Hall closure opening?
Well, I, I want to discuss that further. I mean, my feeling is, as I've mentioned, Tim, is that we should insist upon making appointments prior to coming to Town Hall. We should reemphasize the requirements in terms of anybody showing symptoms to stay home. Obviously, we should enforce the mask-wearing, social distancing, et cetera. We have those various posters put up around Town Hall. And I think we should have the Town Hall locked, but that's just my opinion. I need to get your input also.
I don't think anybody disagrees with that. I'm just curious. Do you need a motion to do that or?
Yes, and what I'll do then is if we approve, once we take a vote, then we'll set something up in terms of communicating these requirements to the public so they are aware of it. It's essentially.
Are we just talking about Town Hall or all Town Hall? Because you have the library, which is traffic. The other building, not so much, but senior centers should be closed.
Right.
Should be, I think you're doing it anyway. That's just a matter of practice.
So some buildings are closed, right?
I mean, there's.
Well, are they open by appointment at the senior center?
Well, the senior center's going to be closed, so, okay, so fundamentally.
There are many towns in the state that, that never opened to the public and were, have all, have been on this appointment-only since the beginning. We're, we're more progressive, I.
Yeah, we.
Is that the right word? And I think we safely, we're able to open Town Hall and serve the public. But now with this certain new surge, I think we need to scale back to what we were doing.
Yeah, we had a modified opening at the senior center because frankly, I'm concerned. We've had a lot of instances, Allison can attest to this, in terms of isolation, depression. It's a problem with our seniors. So we kind of opened up this sporadically, but we're going to have to close it down again because I'm just really concerned about that population.
Would this be tied to the red zone classification?
Yes.
So in other words, once we get out of the red zone, then.
We can go back to where we are today. In other words, we want, we're going to probably go back to Phase 1.
Correlate to the red zone.
Right. We're currently in Phase 2.1, which was a modification of Phase 2, which permitted us to have these open sessions with some of the senior centers, et cetera, and not have the restrictions at Town Hall. But it appears we're going to go back to Phase 1. Everything I'm hearing is that it's imminent with the state. I hope it's not a total shutdown, but you're talking about restaurants, gyms, haircutting, salons, et cetera. I mean, it's, it's going to be a problem. So I think we just have to be careful from our standpoint with our population and also with the citizens. My feeling is if we work together and follow these guidelines and practices, we can get Summers out of the red zone, Tim, I'm hopeful. So we need to be safe and diligent, just follow the requirements, so.
I don't think anybody disagrees. I'm just not sure what the motion is.
Well.
Close all the buildings except Town Hall to public access? And Town Hall then is open by appointment only? Is there other buildings that are open? I'm just not sure what you want to do there.
Well, the senior center will be closed. The library will be closed, okay?
Closed.
Closed, right.
Public Works closed to public access?
Nobody goes in.
Watering official?
Clear sewer.
While you have the, you have the Town Transfer Station, which will be open.
That'll be open normal hours. Our staff will be using more diligence and restricting their access with the interaction with the public.
Any need, any need for public access outside of department?
I would say by appointment just to be safe because we have some legal cases requiring some sensitive documents, reports, something like that. So I think we can handle that safely.
Police station by appointment?
I think we do it by appointment. I think we do the same thing. I think we have some sensitive information, timely information that they're going to need.
Emergency, okay? If somebody has an emergency.
Yeah, obviously, yeah.
Okay.
We're not.
Tibi, Piedmont, both closed?
I'm sorry?
Tibi and Piedmont both closed.
Tibi is by appointment only for social services.
And Piedmont.
Piedmont is closed. Piedmont is closed.
I don't buy any cultural activities.
There isn't any.
Yeah right.
And if I can uh Gillian was intending on still keeping some critical services open like foot care um at the senior center.
Well.
I think if the and I talked to Gillian about that um you know some of all these things we're talking about now you know essential services um I think we should try to continue to provide and the conversation I had with Gillian is you know the state is not shut down and if we do these appointment only for foot care and or tax things these will keep the seniors from going to outside services which is probably riskier for them than if we do an appointment only for those type of services so I I think it'd be best to continue that in an appointment only situation just like town hall and we do in town hall and other essential services.
I would say yeah I would say senior centers should be worried about.
I mean if the state shuts down completely like we did before then you may want to you know we're gonna squash everything at that point.
I think we're talking about levels of control here I mean we're not we're gonna keep town hall operating with restrictions that's all.
Because that foot care is is a medical thing it's not getting your nails done you know it's so it is an essential thing.
And we're still operating direly so I think the messaging is really important because the word closed makes it seem like lights are off nobody's home and I think it's really important that we say you know by appointment only we're still available for.
And mails and the wheels will continue we'll provide for our citizens.
No matter what you know.
So does it make sense to just say all town buildings are by appointment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they'll be stopped.
It'll be a clear message and a simple message for the.
Yeah I think.
That makes a lot of sense it's a great suggestion.
Yeah it's something that could be done through the mail or online or whatever that's what we're encouraging.
Yeah we're prepared to moderate that based upon conditions obviously if we can get this thing they talk about flattening the curve or get this number of positive cases down we can be more lenient but as we have been in the past.
Let's try this and I'll make a motion that at the discretion of the first selectman the town send notice to employees and residents that all town buildings will be open for essential services by appointment only on a date the first selectman deems appropriate.
Right.
I'll second that.
Uh any additional discussion all in favor?
Alright.
Aye Steve you and I will sit down along with Todd and we'll talk about it at appropriate time whether it's next Monday or after Thanksgiving I'm not really sure yet but things are moving so quickly with the with the state based upon the chart that you just showed and the governor's announcement here about an hour ago so.
We'll know a lot Monday you and I will run the report um because that's usually when all the cases get loaded in for the weekend and you know so we'll get a better picture of what's.
I don't want to speak for Brian and the schools but it appears that this remote learning is going to become a modus operandi but that's his decision.
Yeah I've got a Zoom meeting tomorrow within the ten thirty.
Right.
To talk more about what's going on in schools.
Biggest problem they have is staff they just have teachers out it's an issue. All right any additional discussion on the COVID situation I think the key step is to communicate this properly which we'll do in fact I'm thinking of giving a an interview to the General Inquirer and we'll post it on the website social media.
And even if the phone number could be on the sign out in front of town hall in case somebody pulls up in front rather than getting out of their car and walking up they can read the number.
Right I do want to make one other statement.
Did we vote on that?
What's that?
Did we vote on that?
On the number?
No we haven't voted yet.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye one other.
I forget.
Here the Roberts will order expert.
Yeah but I forget.
You could even put that notice on the sign up.
Yeah that's what we're talking about we're talking about uh we do have a situation.
What date are we gonna start we doing that Monday?
Well.
We left the discussion to Bud on that.
I'll discuss that with you and Steve based upon what we hear over the weekend from the governor.
Oh that's fair.
Uh we have one other issue which we're monitoring and that is a person in town hall that is being tested she had some symptoms we're waiting for the results of that we're hoping it's going to be negative if it's positive we have another issue okay in terms of quarantine but we'll address that once we get some additional information.
Do we have a policy for when an employee in a building is diagnosed or test positive?
Yeah as I mentioned we basically say do not come to work if you're showing symptoms.
Contact tracing.
We call the CDC and state health department guidelines on how to handle those cases there's a flow chart you know.
Okay.
And the contact tracing would determine who should quarantine.
Right.
I just ask because we spent a lot of money on that at work and we've had a couple instances in our buildings in Milwaukee and it's just going like clockwork everybody goes home they clean the building gets certified and then people are allowed to come back in after the test so we spend a lot of time doing it and you can get it if you need it but if you've got something already it's good.
And the irony is you may get tested today that's negative and tomorrow you may not be negative so I mean it's it's a concern.
It's that gap between illness and getting results.
Right.
Well it's also making sure the building is clean for people coming back in through the.
Well which we're doing Todd has done a good job on that.
But most of the transmission is respiratory so it's definitely most of getting the social distancing and masks and and quarantining when somebody is sick so.
Any additional discussion on COVID?
No but thanks for the work everyone's doing so tough on.
Yeah sounds great.
Yeah the problem of course is tough to plan when you have a moving target like this and you saw what happened with us just in the past week.
It's a good thing we're having a meeting tonight right?
Really? We'll see what happens next week right?
Stay over there.
Yeah you're only five foot eleven and three quarter inches away from me so back up a quarter inch Tim.
Don't take your mask off.
I didn't measure.
The next item on the agenda is the long-term.
Do you need me for any?
No Steve thank you I appreciate it.
Thank you everybody. Thank you Steve.
Have a good week.
Uh the next item on the agenda is the long-term emergency planning committee or in this case a long-term recovery committee we formed this committee some time ago in response to concerns about how we respond to the next pandemic and I guess yeah Kenoyer is gonna be here but I'm sorry Ann didn't recognize I apologize.
Yeah you can't recognize me David?
Yeah well I wasn't sure if you were smiling at me or not I apologize so Ann is asked to to address the board.
I'd like to say a few introductory things just beforehand because I was involved with getting this thing started to begin with uh first of all I'd like to mention that this idea came out of a discussion I had with Paul Salva back in the first week in August and I believe it was sometime later in August that the board has let me authorize the appointment of appointed nine members of the committee I recall a couple other things that we have discovered as I've been attending every one of the committee meetings and one of the things we've discovered through our work with other towns in the state region that we're in is that we are six to eight weeks ahead of the state and that the state is now encouraging all towns in the region to do the same thing that Summers is doing so that Summers is very much on the leading edge of the curve and pursuing our effort to do the long-range recovery and emergency planning so we'll just start with this leave that it's important that everybody understands that because we're really doing a great job.
Yeah my compliments to you Tim for pursuing this and the members if I had them correct are Ann Kenoyer Glenn Reynolds of course Tim Keeney Dave Martin Paul Salva Allison Maynard Jeff Corden who's here Bill Shapiro who's not here and then we had Chris Boucher I think resigned.
Was on that's a ref you would tell.
It's a good cross mix of both political appointees or elected officials medical personnel business people social services etcetera so I think it's a great idea I mean lessons learned things we can do in the future to be better prepared for this future crisis when it occurs so Ann I'll turn it over to you.
So what we have done over the course of the last few months is try and identify what the unmet needs of the community are as it related to the pandemic so we had sent out surveys to individuals as well as the business community and we got a very good response I would say and the the most glaring issue we found was the communication piece and what we further discovered was that you know each director each unit within the town government was doing a great job responding and reaching out to the people that they served within their little silo however it felt as if there was not one message coming out one voice and that was there were some people that hadn't heard anything because perhaps they're not part of you know they don't need the services of the town so and if you're not driving through town maybe they didn't see the sign about the radio station and those kinds of things so there were some that didn't hear anything there were some that heard limited stuff thought we were doing a good job thought we could be doing better at getting information out in a timely manner so it was really the resounding thing that we felt needed to be addressed in the immediate given the uptick of cases and the anticipation of there being another wave where we're going to have to modify operations in the town and wanted to have a mechanism by which we could reach the masses in a timely manner we feel that messaging is super important and like you had just mentioned you have so many competing websites and information and what what the superintendent is putting out he does great messaging and he gets out to almost 5,000 email addresses so they're getting one message and then you've got different websites that are showing different things and we felt that it would be important for us to have a central notification system so Glenn Reynolds had reached out to some companies that do just that and and most recently we had gotten information as a related to the program that the state uses the CT Alert and that's the state notification system that can also be translated into a local program that each director could use it could be used by the public safety could be used by the fire department and you could put out messages to the town however they wished to receive them and it's a it was a really really comprehensive program that we feel would be able to reach people that may not be on the internet you know and it kind of crossed the board where you didn't have to necessarily give all your information because some people don't want to give out their personal email or phone number there's a way for you to just put in your zip code so that if anything is happening in the town of Summers you can get those notifications and they can be somewhat routine all the way up to what like a moderate level if it was a 911 kind of emergent issue you would work with the state police dispatch to be putting out a message because they want the message to be clear because the message would really be them responding to or notifying you know in an emergency type situation.
How do people access this then because you know we've tried different means of communication we've tried obviously the website we've tried social services we've tried physical Summers Connect magazine we've tried the radio station but if you're talking about this particular proposal how how do people know about it how do they access it and you know are they gonna have the same kind of situation they've had in the past by not looking at these other options you know?
Well like CT Alert there is an icon right on the state website that you can go and you can register but what this system does is it already has the white pages all those numbers already in there so probably half of our population already has their their information publicly out there in some form that they can call from and then what the town would further have to do is I know like the recreation department had their own database Allison has her own database so you have those contact you know information and that you put it into because the system will always be as good as the information you input and so you get all of that information into I think it's it works through Excel yes somebody sent it so and then they can the people that opt in can decide whether they want an email they want a phone call they want both they have that choice they can decide whether they want information about you know the library or just town hall information or only emergent information they could ask for traffic information like all of those types of things could be added under the authority of you folks that could determine who would have authorization to put out those messages right so if you know 190 is closed you might want to send something out whether it's going to be a contracted incident or operation or if it's gonna if it's just an emergent thing where there is a major accident that would just determine how you would put that message out.
So if you sign up for this Ann?
Yes.
Then you can opt to have a phone call from the system or you can access with your computer?
Yep.
What about those people that don't have a phone we have some of those it's hard to believe don't have access to computers?
It calls your home phone too.
Yeah.
It's all landline as well yeah it's whatever communication you decide.
I guess the question do we have a system like that already set up or not?
Years back we had reverse 911.
Yeah.
We've had that for years.
Has that been?
It's not that so the fire department Glenn and I and we can talk about it we're supporting it the only thing that the board just has to be aware of is that these systems can be very manpower intensive for the care and feeding and update so what was happening is we had this town had a reverse 911 system and people weren't updating people changed their cell phones and numbers and this and the other thing and very quickly a third of the numbers in the database weren't active or weren't accurate and so that became more of an issue because then people were saying stop calling me this isn't my number anymore and things like that I don't live in town anymore so.
Does she gotta have the same problems with this system?
I think it's a better system in that it does tie into the state system and it does have a lot more options and opportunities to maintain it and a lot of subservice which the old system was lacking but there is just understand there is going to be some manpower overhead.
What's the cost for the system itself?
So it's um it's probably averaging around $500 a month.
Yeah.
The first year might be a little bit more only because they come in to do some training.
Ten hours ten hours of training they offer.
But that I I mean I think it's a minimal investment for what the program provides for I know that Bill and Jeff both have it in Enfield and Vernon and they can speak to their experience with it.
Yeah Bill why don't you give us your opinion?
Sure um so like I mean they did a great job explaining it there's really two pieces to it so there's the e-911 system the 911 centers have access to so for instance if there's a gas leak or some you know barricaded person they can send it out to listed and unlisted numbers through the 911 database and through state statutes to get access to it what Summers would then purchase and and just important to know Summers does not have access to that system because we do not have a 911 center so we would need to use Allen County Fire or the state police and there's some red tape there's a little bit of timing getting those messages out so Summers has no access to it unlike some of the larger communities if they were to purchase this system it will be just for Summers you would put a button on your website and people will be able to self-enroll but just I mean Ann can explain it well you pick how you want to be contacted so email text message phone call to your cell phone your landline you can enroll like I enrolled for Vernon I also enrolled for Summers you can enroll if you have like a family member in other town you can enroll and monitor it and then you get to pick what you want for notifications so if you're a senior you want the senior center notifications you check it off if you're younger and you're not part of the senior center you pick what you want for notifications and then the department head would be empowered. And then the department head would be empowered to put in relevant content. So, time from Public Works, if their recycling center's closed one day, he'd go put a message out saying, "There's no recycling center this Sunday due to the snow." And let the public know. And the only people that opted into that would get it. And like the chief said, that was the problem with the old system. The new system though, with new state and federal regulations, allows for easy opt-in and opt-out. So, you just text "stop" back and it takes you right off the list.
Isn't there also, Bill, a way for, you know, E-911? We were presented by Kevin McManus there. He said that currently, right now, they capture through the white and yellow pages 3,815 people in Summers. And under Summers Wireless, they can capture 4,829 households. So, whether they opt in or not, you can reach those people.
That's good.
So, there's certain kinds of messages you're going to want to just get it out there, whether they've opted in or not.
You know, there's certain laws that protect, like, there's the old TCPA Act that was against faxing. I think there's new ones on emails. As a government, are we exempt from any kind of...
So, there's add-ons in the core of Christ. There's add-ons to use like publicly available databases. If you wanted to pre-populate, but I think the town strategy would just be to publicize this. You know, put it in traditional media, put it out on our social media, maybe even do a mailing and just tell people, "Listen, you know, opt into this service if you want to get updates." And then allow people to opt in without having to go to public databases and opt people in that maybe don't want to get the messages.
Bill, I have a couple of questions. The first question would be, is there any, who, who staff costs at Vernon? And then the second question, are there any grants available for this kind of a system?
So, we use it as part of our normal workday. So, for instance, like our department heads or, you know, myself, I do a lot of messaging. We have the luxury of having a communications director. He's responsible for some of it. We typically factor it into our normal workday. And a lot of these communications, you know, the town would already put up, like your message you put on the website the other day, the message you put out on social media, that would also go out through this system. So, I mean, a lot of these are existing messages. They would just be transmitted in a different way and let people get the message how they want to get it. As far as grants go, I mean, Kevin from Everbridge said that, you know, there may be some, it may qualify.
He said a percentage of it could be covered possibly by FEMA as a reimbursement for the first year.
Oh, but the year thereafter.
Well, but again, you can always cancel it if you don't like it. The first year, you say, "Hey, we're just going to get rid of this system."
Well, I guess that's where I go. What was the response rate of the survey? It was very high, right?
15%.
15%. I mean, would we consider surveying the community and ask them, "Would you use this if it was available before we spend six grand?"
Well, that's a question I have also because we have a certain percentage out of the survey that no matter what you say in terms of communication outlets, they say, "We didn't get the message."
That's my fear. I feel like we're paying the automated ignorance, right?
Well, it's an issue.
People aren't interested in what we have now. I don't know.
Well, I think you've got to admit that the system we have right now, it doesn't work very well. I mean, that's what the survey told us.
I agree.
So, I think there's a leadership element here where I think we need to step forward and do something and see whether or not it improves the situation.
Yeah, where do we settle?
So, you're spending, you know, $6,000 is not a lot of money.
No, it's not. But I mean, where do we settle?
It's probably twice what my Bryson bill is, you know.
But if you had like fewer than 1,000 residents sign up, do we then say, "Okay, it's not worth renewing"? Set some sort of alarm for it.
Because right now with informing, it's, we only have like 231 people.
Well, a lot of this is going to have to do with marketing and getting the message out as to what it is and how beneficial it could be and how directed it'll be as well.
I'd like to have Mike make some comments. Mike, any?
I guess I'm a little confused. The state has this Everbridge system. And we as a town, are we entitled to use that and leverage it?
Only for emergency purposes only. But we could not access it directly?
You could not ask the town because it isn't COVID, a once-in-a-lifetime emergency state and we can't leverage the system for something like that. Okay? And the cost is...
500.
A little over 5,000 a year.
You can negotiate.
A little over 5,000 a year.
What's the initial cost?
I think it was like 72, yeah.
72, right.
The first year because of...
He said 67, yeah.
67.
67.
I do believe that it is covered under the CARES Act, but you can't delay because that'll expire on December 31st of this year. So, you have to find out first. And if it is covered, FEMA says it is covered, software purchases are covered if it's for informing the community. And if you go out and buy it, then it would be, I'm not sure what the percentage would be, but it would be reimbursable. You'd have to do it before the end of this year. So, that's just one thing. But again, so you're basing, I just don't, I don't see the leap of logic as to that you were saying that this is going to solve everything in that way.
Did I say that? Did I say it's going to solve everything? I don't think I said that.
It was said that what we have now is inadequate. And what we have now is what, about seven or eight different means of publicizing? And this is just one more means of publicizing, right?
I think it's just more comprehensive. And I think it, what it does is it allows you to send out messages that are both non-emergent and emergent so that you can, you can speak to things that people might not otherwise ever have access to know.
And so, other towns that have this, what is the penetration rate? How many people sign up for this?
Jeff, do you have?
Yeah, I can speak. You bring up some good points. I think the big difference is the current system that the town has, that it requires the people to go look for the information, right? And we're depending on them to, we search, they come to the website or come to Facebook or come to Twitter. But Twitter's a bad example because Twitter actually does push out. But this system, when, and there would have to be a pretty good recruitment on the town's end by using all those facilities.
So, if I never decide to act, I'm never going to get anything from you. So, as a resident.
If you don't sign up.
I'm going to have to reach out and ask for that information.
That's not true.
I hope. So, I'm just going to get unsolicited things that I really don't care to get?
No, no. I'll explain to you because we use it. We'll do, the town will do recruitment for people to solicit them to sign up. Once they sign up, they can get how and what they're notified for. Right? So, you, the E-911 system is separate. Bill did excellent job explaining it and Greg was phenomenal in bringing this now. And the reason why we're bringing it now was because of December deadline. That's why we're not even done with our committee. We thought this was good enough and worthwhile enough to bring it before you guys so we don't lose out on the possible reimbursement. So, yes, the initial effort on the town is to recruit people to sign up. After that, they will be notified of what they want to be notified for. So, they don't have to go to the website every day. If there's a message that the town, the town members, or here at the town hall or through emergency, fire, E and M or police, they push out that message. That can be email, text, or a phone call. But that's a big difference is...
So, the towns you looked at, what kind of a signup rate do they have for the residents? What kind of a penetration?
We don't know the answer to that.
25% of the people in town?
We do know that there's 51, there are 51 municipal customers right now at Everbridge. And it included within that are the towns of East Windsor, Windsor, Vernon, South Windsor, Ellington, and Enfield.
Okay. Now, in those towns, there are, is the population, how much of the population has signed up beyond this system?
We don't know the answer to that.
Everbridge should have that answer.
They probably would have that answer, absolutely.
Can you find that out? Does it make it worthwhile? It's only 10%. Does it make, well, I would say it would make it worthwhile if it was over 50%, maybe 40. I don't know.
Can I share one point? The closest thing for comparison, I think, the superintendent does a great job in this town. And as soon as you come on board, parents complain they weren't getting communication. The big point that Jeff said was, the thing that's different about this, this is one system. Yeah, there's seven different separate systems you can go get to access the information. But instead of the user having to go and hit all of those separate areas for the communication, it is now consolidated and it finds you. So, that person, you don't even have to think about it. The superintendent of schools, when he had done that, the feedback from parents was overwhelming. I don't have a statistic on what the penetration was. But let me just tell you, any parent in this town with a kid in the school system thinks Brian, that one issue has done an unbelievable job. And it's so powerful because I look at my phone, I got to sign up for all the notices I want. And I know exactly what's going on and it's fed into my texts. So, I'm up to it. And I didn't take the time to go to the website to look that up. So, this is a powerful platform.
So, okay. So, year one, let's say we get the grant and it's a year one thing. And then we do our own statistical analysis and find out it's just not making, not cutting it, it's not working, it's a very low participation rate. Can we end it or are we signed up for a period of time?
You could end it at the end of the first year.
You could.
Yes.
So, I'm just looking at risk here. Probably a lower risk if we, if we can get a good portion of the upfront investment reimbursed. It's not what we're trying to do. But again, who's going to operate it, I guess would be the question.
And I would think, Mike, we could get to 15% of the population to accept that. That would be a really high rate and it'd be much better than where we are today.
You could also use it, we use it in the department I work in. We use it to notify our own employees about different opportunities. So, you could have all these fallen town workers. It's not just for community notification. It could also be used for internal notification. So, we fill overtime, get the jobs, if there's a need to call in a certain group, we send those.
I do like that, Jeff, right?
So, to control that. As a selectman, you can pick different groups, you know, you can send a massive notice to whoever.
Yeah.
Your own employees can sign up and get the notification.
Yeah, I agree.
I think a lot of what you're saying is valid. I guess the question to the selectman would be is whose job description gets amended to handle this kind of activity? Because I, we don't have anything like that now, I don't believe.
We talked a little bit about that. We thought that the emergency management director would be the likely first person to step into the breach.
All in favor?
Who's you're adding this to? Except for you.
You're administrator. You're administrator.
I do want to make a few comments. I think, I think the points are well taken here. We have these various levels of communication. Some people access one or two, they don't access the other ones. Some people don't access any at all. But the question is, how do we market, as you indicate, Tim, and communicate? This is a powerful tool that you've got to sign up for. Otherwise, we're wasting the money. We're trying to over-communicate if that's possible, but it's just another form, so...
Maybe worth a shot.
Right?
I think, I think it's worth a shot to see, you know, I think we can come up with a plan to market it, but it isn't a one-shot thing. I think it's...
You have to continue.
You've got to continue. Through the magazine, just keep running.
I think Everbridge itself has a lot of experience with how other towns have marketed it. I'd like to make a motion that we engage Everbridge with a, their sales team, we didn't talk to their sales team, but they did indicate, we did get some feeling as to, and we'd authorize the first selectman to negotiate a contract for one year for this service.
One second, Bill.
Okay. All in favor? Any additional discussion? I guess what I'd like to note, Glenn, is maybe, you know, I could sit down with these representatives and we'd get a better picture of this and maybe we can negotiate a rare price. I don't know.
I'd be happy to sit on that, too.
And also with Kim, is...
It's good work. And again, for the committee to come back with a recommendation as quick as...
Also, the figures that we were given were based on the prison population being part of Summers' population. So, you take that out, immediately it puts us in a stronger position when you start to negotiate a price.
Absolutely.
Good job.
Okay.
As far as noticing, I mean, you're going to use every avenue. You're using the website, you're using Facebook, fire department, you're using their sign, the sign out front. And what we found in my area, when we were doing recruitment for Facebook, the old-fashioned Sam reports on the main drag, so 83, 190, just, you know, the PPW can probably help you with that.
Oh, recycling center, we'll put a sign on. That's 4,000 people right there.
Take a dollar off the fee, though.
Need your artery.
But, you know, I think the, I think the point that Mike Marinaccio raised is a good one, though. And what is it that other, what other towns have experienced with regards to participation rate? And how might it be improved? What can we learn from their experience?
I'd like to see that, I'd like to see that data.
Well, I share the preferences, so...
Frequency drives use, drives adoption. So, if we have some sort of regular update that comes out so that people get, you know, there's what's going on in town, it'll add value to it, too, so...
We have, I'm sorry.
I'm just curious, can we, can we use it to post openings? We have on boards and commissions, for example. So, you know, send out a message to the town so they're looking for people to fill seats.
I'll address that next.
What I would caution just because of is oversaturation. Where if people start getting stuff that they really don't care about and they opt out in the whole package, then you're going to, you're going to...
Phil Myers got a couple of good examples of what not to do, right, Bill?
Yeah. We spent a lot of time on strategic communication. Certainly, I mean, Jeff, myself, others that have background would be happy to help, you know, with the rollout of this.
And they have templates, too. So, it's, you can fill in the blanks so that you can get some standard messaging. So, it almost, and there's like these webinars that they have also about how to clearly communicate and clearly message so that, you know, because oftentimes it's not what you say, it's how you say it. And there is a lot of information as part of the training that kind of teaches that so that your wording is consistent and the messaging is consistent. But you can do things such as polling, you can have conference calls with whatever groups you decide, like if you want to have a conference call with your directors, you can do that through this system. So, it really has some features that could be of great value as long as you use them.
We have a motion on the floor.
We already voted.
Yeah. Vote all in favor.
One thing I might also mention that Kevin McManus mentioned, this guy, by the way, was incredibly impressive. And he is their chief technology person. He said that it could be turned around within one week, once you sign up for it, to make it effective. So, you know, in other words, it's, the reason the committees come to the board now is because of the timeliness of the matter.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. So, in other words, it could be ramped up pretty quickly here.
So, you'd be responsible, Glenn, for filing for the grant? Okay. Good. To your point, Tim, about, well, I'm going to give you a selectmen update in terms of the commissions. I'm putting this note out tomorrow on our website, "Calling All Volunteers." We have many commissions in Summers that effectively assist in the efficient running of government. These commissions are vitally important to the success of our town with many vacancies currently impacting our productivity. We're looking for volunteers to serve on the following commissions. Building Code, Board of Appeals, Conservation, Cultural Commission, Economic Development, Emergency Preparedness Advisory, Housing Authority, Planning, WPCA, and an alternate to the zoning commission. Volunteering is the ultimate exercise in democracy. You vote in elections once a year, but when you volunteer, you vote about the kind of community you want to live in. Please seriously consider sharing your time, your experience, and your expertise by volunteering to serve on one or more of these commissions. If interested, please contact Kim on the floor and I give the email address, et cetera. And the biggest problem I've seen, one of the problems I've seen since I've been first selectman, is getting people to volunteer. We have some dedicated folks of their time and their experience and their levels, but we have all these vacancies. And if people don't want to participate in government, you know, it's an issue. So, we've tried to ask people to participate. Trying this particular message again, which we've done in the past. If anybody knows anybody that wants to volunteer, I see Catherine here. She's been interested in attending all of our meetings. I'm trying to solicit her to join one of our commissions. But there's a lot of talent out there and I think we should tap into that.
But I've already talked to some people about this as well. I think your notice is a terrific idea. And I would like to just say that it could be even better if you could describe what each of these groups does, what their responsibilities are. Because you can't just expect people to understand, you know, what the cultural commission does. And they also want to know what kind of commitment is it? How many meetings are there? How often?
I think the key thing is if we can get people to say, "Yes, I'm interested. Tell me about it, I'll be glad to..." I think the key thing is, we can get people to say, yes, I'm interested, tell me about it, I'll be glad to sit down and discuss with them.
I don't know, I think you've got, I think you've got to feed that information up front in order to, so they understand that they're interested.
Already under every department.
Say pardon?
On our webpage, under every commission, it shows all the commission members in charge of the commission. It talks about what they do. So they just have to go to the website.
Maybe you could add that to the notice, but that, yeah, Principal Conservation Commission is the minister in the web. So, yeah, I would ask people to go to the website to read about the different committees, commissions that are open.
And does it also say on the website how often they meet?
It does, first Monday, the month.
You can look at those when they meet, and you can actually look under them and see their agenda and see if they have their annual meeting schedule in there and everything.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
I'll modify this.
They don't have the special meetings in there, just the regular schedule.
Right, I understand.
I'll modify this message.
Good point.
I'm saying publicly, everybody who's watching this meeting, is please, please volunteer. It's your community, and we need your assistance to make it better. And I just wish people, more people would participate. We had a very good turnout this recent presidential election of 88%, which is outstanding. Not like it was four years ago. We had 96.8%, which we received the Governor's Democracy Cup for the state for turnout. The problem, of course, are local elections. And this, what we do here as a board affects everybody in this town. And so you should have a right to make your voices heard, or give your contribution to those committees that could shape policy. So I urge everybody to volunteer.
But if you counted some of the votes more than once, we'd have more than 100% turnout.
Yeah, well, I can't help you there, so. The next item, boards and commissions, so we have a few resignations. Chris Boucher, who has left municipal government, he is with the EPAC. I accept his resignation with regret. We have Todd Rowland, who is going to recommend some open space and trails. Part of that, Todd, we have Richard Carey, or Spider Carey as he's known, has resigned from the Housing Authority because he's moved out of town. But Todd, I'll turn it over to you regarding this, plus your staffing request.
Oh, if I could. We have a request to serve on the Open Space and Trails Committee from Chuck Carson. We still have three vacancies on that committee, I believe. Chuck is familiar with all the members and is an active volunteer. And we, the committee took this up at their Monday meeting and voted unanimously to recommend having Chuck come and serve on the Open Space and Trails Committee. That committee, as you know, is really charged with maintaining all of the town-owned trails in town, and they do a great job of that. And we're always looking for more help on that committee.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Chuck Carson to be a member of the Open Space and Trails Committee.
Second?
Any additional discussion?
I'd just like to say they do do an awesome job keeping those trails open, and it's something we really can celebrate in this town that we have as a recreation area. So appreciate someone stepping forward.
And this is a good example where people really understand what the sort of does. They identify with it, and they volunteer for it.
We've had less, we've had less problems filling vacancies on open trails.
Yeah.
Because of that very fact, so.
14-member board, so it's...
Yeah.
Very visible work, though.
All right.
And they're all volunteers.
All right, okay, Todd. The next is the staffing request for...
I think that is unanimous.
Yeah, I'll tell you why, yes.
Yes, next is the staffing request for recreation. I think you received the letter that I sent to the first selectman.
Yep.
We have, we had 100 applications for this position. We went through all of those and boiled them down to 23, and conducted phone interviews of the 23. Of them, we had seven finalists that we interviewed in person with a board that included the operations director, myself, as well as the recreation coordinator. From the seven, we picked two finalists, and then we sat with the two finalists one at a time with the first selectman. And of those two, we picked a finalist, Maureen Purcell. Maureen is currently a rec and park director in the town of Willington. She's been doing it for five years and doing it an exemplary job by all accounts. And is really, she is the department, she's everything, she does everything. She runs a basketball tournament at day camp at the town.
She lives in Willington?
She lives in Willington. She actually loves her job, she's just looking for a bigger community and one that's more supportive of recreation, and is why she applied. We were quite impressed with her and think she will be able to step right in and be very comfortable here in Summers and really... It was between her and another candidate, the other candidate and her was excellent. He presented himself tremendously. We think he will be a good candidate for a larger community, frankly. He's used to an urban-type setting. I think Summers would have been a little bit slow for him, frankly, and he was more focused on the youth. In recreation, we've done, we, Chris Boucher and Kim Halligan, over the last five years, have done a great job of really building all of our youth programs and rec. What we're lacking is more in the adult programming and senior programming in particular. Maureen has built that in Willington, and I think we'll focus more on that and bridges the divide between social services, senior center, and recreation. We're lacking a little bit there. They'll continue to run all their youth programming and bring on new stuff as we see fit and the residents want. But we really want to focus on the adult program, and there's a lot of need out there. Because anytime we run an adult program, it sells out. So obviously, there's need out there, and we think Maureen will be the great candidate for this. My idea for this deputy position is to bring her on as a deputy for six to 12 months and let her get to know Summers and really come up with some new ideas and look at what we've done in the past. And then she'll be able to grow rapidly into the position of director and frankly, getting out of it. As we did before.
Spoken like a true leader.
I'd like to make a few comments. I was very impressed with her. I've interviewed my whole 50-year career, and she just was unbelievable. She has the ability to budget, which is key also, as everybody knows. The Recreation Department, I call it a profit center. It returns money to the town. And there's a tremendous demand in terms of these youth camps, as well as the adult aspect of the thing. And we can generate a lot of money here.
We do.
But more importantly, we can fill it in the community. And she just has that ability from a standpoint of communication, oral communication, written communication. Very sensitive to parents, because parents get pretty upset. A little Johnny isn't playing the ball like he should, so. I agree with you and everybody that interviewed her. I thought the two candidates we had were exceptional, it was a tough choice.
It was.
But it came down really to the fit.
Right.
And I'd like to stress that the fit's key here in terms of what we do at Town Hall, because we don't have a lot of staff. And so the interaction, especially with parents, is going to be crucial. So my feeling is, she's an excellent candidate.
I'd like to commend you on the process that you went through. It sounds very thorough, all those engaged. And I'd like to make a motion that we hire Maureen Purcell as the Deputy Director of Recreation.
Second the motion.
Okay, any additional discussion?
Third, Pete.
January 4th, first Monday in January.
Okay.
Good luck.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You'll reach out to her with a formal offer?
With Ken, so.
Yes, I will.
And, I'm sorry, what is the start date again?
January 4th, Monday, the first Monday in January.
That would be good to have somebody follow Chris, because he built a nice program, and you get to have it maintained.
I'll tell you, which is a good point, Chris, we were sorry to lose Chris. Chris was one of the most exceptional managers I've had the privilege of managing. But this gal, I think, has got that potential. She really is that dynamic, so.
Great.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
I have one more when you get to adding up.
Yes, all your hair, the steep grant?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, the steep grant for the generator.
We've been, something we've been talking about is getting backup power here at Town Hall. And we applied for a small-town economic assistance grant in the amount of $71,000. We received that grant from the state, and the way that this works is you spend the money. First, you get approval, then you sign the contract with the state. And then you spend the money. Once we're done with the project and close it out, we send the invoices in to get reimbursed. We paid the invoices out of our funds, but it's, we've used steep grants in the past. This is really a formality as part of our capital process. It has to go before this board first, and then it'll go to the CIP committee for consideration. So I'm requesting permission to bring this to the CIP committee for a steep grant, for a grant for a generator in the amount of $71,000, which will come out of the steep grant.
Make a motion that we authorize the first selectman to sign up on that and move it along.
I'll second that motion.
Nice work.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, this is great. Yeah. This, they've already started some preliminary work in terms of...
Yep. Yeah, we're going to put it over here, and we're going to trench them in. We'll get going, the generators, like, three months out.
Yeah, it's, Town Hall without a generator is not smart, so that's...
But we envision using this as a warming center, once we have that one, for these smaller events that we seem to be getting every month now, for people that lose power, they can come here.
Great.
All right, thanks, Todd.
Who wrote the grant? Application?
I did.
Nice. Thank you. Thank you.
Great.
The next item is the approval of the minutes for November the 5th. Both gentlemen, we see these.
Yep.
Any additional?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of November 5th.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is the proposed 20...
You got a vote on it?
Yeah, we did, all in favor.
You did? Oh, okay.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm getting confused with Roberts.
I'm totally against.
We might have voted twice on that one, I don't know. It's all good.
The next item is the 2021 proposed holiday schedule, which I think the gentlemen will receive a copy of this. This follows kind of what we do with the state, similar to what we had last year.
It's the same.
Yeah.
And the holidays are...
I would like just to point out that I know that you follow the state, but, you know, I had some issues with this last year. But you also throw in an additional three days over and above that, because of the holiday falls on Friday. That adds another three days of holiday to every employee's...
It's up lower, and honestly, people don't, they don't take them. I have, I think, four that I'm probably not going to be able to use, because they have to be used up.
So you end up with basically a month's worth of work that's a holiday. That's what it comes down to. So just make sure everybody understands what's going on. So I support it, and I'll make a motion that we approve the holiday calendar as proposed.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
For 2021.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. The next item is the approval of the Board of Selectment meeting schedule. In the past, we've...
Guys, we just figure out, go first and third, particularly work.
Yeah, we propose we follow this year's cadence on the first and third Thursday of each month, barring any holidays, natural disasters, COVID closures, yada, yada, yada.
COVID, whatever. We'll have to respond a little bit on that also, in terms of...
I'll take care of that.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
On that note, I think I mentioned my daughter's going in for surgery on December 7th.
No, you didn't.
Yeah, selective surgery to mitigate any potential of cancer coming back. So she's, we're going to quarantine, like, starting tomorrow, so that we can visit her in the hospital. So I'll be attending any meetings for the balance of this year, and probably January by virtual.
Well, I was unaware of that, but we wish her the best of luck.
Yeah, it's all good. The surgical team she's got is phenomenal, but we're going to be the primary caregivers, so I'll be taking some time from work and taking some time with her to make sure she recuperates. But we've met the surgical team, we've met the medical team. I just have to say, I'm so amazed at the talent that's within a couple hours drive of here. When you've got something like that, that's a horrible journey, there's folks that can make it a little less horrible.
I'll chat with you after this.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make it known that I'll join, but I'll be remote.
Well, we'll work with you.
Yep.
Okay. Any additional opportunity to add agenda items, not already discussed?
I have one, sorry. Brian and I have been working on something. It's kind of a preliminary CIP request for cardiac monitor. We were normally in the cadence to get one in July, but Brian and I are doing some research. We may have some opportunity to get it through the CARES Act, as it is related to responsible COVID and emergency services. This would still have to go from here to the CIP committee.
Yeah.
But again, it would have to be done before the end of the year to qualify, if it would even qualify. Brian's making some phone calls right now and checking to see if it will qualify. We found some departments in Massachusetts that were able to get a cardiac monitor through the program. So if we can move it from July to December, and help get funding, it seemed to make sense.
This is part of the ALS response?
Correct, so it's ALS, we have cardiac monitors. So we currently have two good cardiac monitors and two older kind of spare ones that are coming out of service next year. The 12 light packs we bought used originally, so they're not going to be able to service anyways after July. So we're going to have to buy one.
What's the potential reimbursement rate?
75%.
In the balance, obviously, you folks run cash positive with...
Correct, so the balance would, Brian said, the balance would come out of, the original plan was this would come out of the ENS billing anyways, either way. This would not be a taxpayer.
The other thing is, I have received two pieces of correspondence by people that, basically, we saved their lives with this piece of equipment. So it's something we can add to our ALS service.
But with COVID, we have been running, like, Monday through Friday now, we're running three trucks, because one's dedicated to the prison, Monday through Friday again. So that backup truck and equipment is now there, so having a third monitor would help us out in the long run. And again, if we can tie it into the theme of reimbursement, it only seems to make sense.
Is it appropriate at this time then to offer a motion to...
Yes, authorize me to sign this.
And it still has to go through CIP and Board of Finance.
authorize first selectman to...
Process.
Sign off on the acquisition of a cardiac monitor for $40,000.
Second?
Favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I'll sign this, John.
Thanks, Brian, if you're still on the phone, thanks for the work on the grant. Okay, still there.
Hi, Brian.
You don't have to punch out yet, brother, you said yes.
No, but Brian has been helping out with this.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And the amount of work you guys do to get grants to fund this stuff is really impressive and...
Trade money.
Well, it should be kind of highlighted in our annual report back to the town when we go to budget of the work that folks like this do to make sure that we leverage every opportunity we have to mitigate the cost of the town and still provide great service. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Before we make a motion to adjourn, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and have a safe Thanksgiving. We all have a lot to be thankful for. We have our health, we have a great crew here in Town Hall, we have good cooperation with the Board of Selectment. And again, just as another advertisement, please volunteer for some of our commissions.
You're speaking of the choir, boss.
So make a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye. Good night, Brian.
No, 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 if you look on the second page. Yeah, so I'll, I'm going to do it.
Today's date?
19th, 5th.
Do not even know anymore.
Thank you. Chair.
Thanks. Yeah, it's, she has, no, she had, correct. Hopefully not, because it's canceled. And the numbers have been good, but she's going to be... It's something she's been planning on for two years, got the surgical team. She's a little...